Downers Grove Great School District 58, Board of Education here on Monday, May 12th, 2025 at 7:00 PM here at the Downers Grove Civic Center. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on the Village of Downers Grove's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please go along?
Member Bernard?
Here.
Member Joshi?
Here.
Member Ellis?
Here.
Member Hannah?
Here.
Member Olchik?
Is that so?
Member Thomas?
Here.
And member Hughes?
Here. Tonight, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide public comment to the board later on in the agenda. The board has asked anyone interested in making a comment to please fill out a card and indicate the topic to be discussed. These can be placed in the basket at the table over there by the main door. I have allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment and ask everyone to please keep their public comments to three minutes. We're going to start off, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to welcome the Student Council from Hillcrest School to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome up Principal Zapka from Hillcrest School. How are you today?
Great, thank you. Well, we're going to kick off with our Student Council officers here this evening to highlight some of the things that they appreciate and enjoy most about our school.
Hi, I'm Johnny Colvenu and I am the Student Council President.
Hello, I'm Annelyne Nelson and I'm the clerical secretary of Hillcrest School. Eva Berry is not here, but she is the recording secretary.
Hi, I am Jay Seaver and I am the VP of Spirit.
Hi, I'm Spencer McGrath and I am the Vice President of Service.
For all school meetings, each grade level is assigned a month and a focus topic which they get to represent and teach to entire school. A few topics we focused on this year was inclusion, zones of regulation, friendship and respect, caring for the environment and mental health and awareness. In addition to learning about our new focus topics, we celebrate our Hound Dogs of the Month by playing a game at these assemblies. Every month, we meet with our Hillcrest families, which consists of students in every grade level and are led by a Hillcrest staff member. You stay in the same Hillcrest family for the entirety of your Hillcrest career. This is a cool way to form connections with students and other grade levels and staff that you might not have as a teacher. We learn more about our monthly focus topics by playing games or completing activities. One of the special things about Hillcrest is our focus to be possum. If a teacher or staff member notices a student displaying one of our three core values, being respectful, responsible and safe, they give the student a paw slip. These paw slips are then entered into a raffle. If you are selected, then you will get a prize of your choice at Possum Lunch. Each month, teachers also select a Hound Dog of the Month. This title is given to students who demonstrate kindness and respect. Another way Student Council helped to promote spreading kindness throughout Hillcrest School was by starting a kindness chain that hung throughout the building.
This year, Student Council had the opportunity to do a few different service projects to help support our school and community. One service project we did was collecting non-perishable food items for the fish pantry. Another cause we supported was scarce by collecting plastic bread tags while teaming up with a couple other schools in District 58.
Some of our favorite Spirit Days this year include Student-Teacher Swap Day, Dress Like a Celebrity Day and Rock Your Socks Day for Down Swims and Awareness. We even planned an Earth Day Spirit Week. We included this visit from Downers Grove Garden Club, where they presented a swamp white oak tree. And we excited to watch this tree grow from our school for many years to come.
I would like to say a special thanks to our staff supervisors, Jaclyn Bernard and Kyla Walters, who have been leading these young leaders throughout this school year. At this time, I'd like to invite up our Hillcrest PTA co-presidents Kelly Phelan-Wilson and Katie Wojahowski.
Hello.
Hi. So the main thing that we want to talk about today is the Hillcrest community. We think that's part of what sets our school apart. And what Katie and I have tried to do in the two years that we have been co-presidents, we're nearing the end of our term, is really make the PTA a welcoming place for everyone and try to get as many parents involved as we possibly can. One way that we did that that happened sort of accidentally is that we identified a parent who was really good at talking to people and able to go have coffee with parents who were interested in doing things. And just by virtue of that person being willing to go out and have a cup of coffee with a new Hillcrest parent, with a first grader or a kindergartner, we have recruited a lot of new volunteers to chair a lot of our programs as we are phasing ourselves out. Yes, and trying to make sure that we're bringing in the new crops of families.
Yeah. One other thing that Kelly and I focused on and kind of wrote on, you know, on Michelle Zapka's vibe is the community feel. So obviously, Mrs. Zapka is our building principal. She sets the tone. And so Kelly and I work with our PTA board to make sure that that tone is carried throughout the PTA, that we're not just supporting our students, but that we're supporting our entire building and working as one giant community. We have seen, over the past two years, this really come together. One of our Student Council members actually wearing a T-shirt that says, "We are family." And it truly feels like that. And so when we come together, our programs and fundraising, it exceeds everyone's expectations. And because of that, Kelly and I have worked with Michelle to make sure that our students and staff had some wonderful new additions in these past two years.
So in these pictures, you can see from top left, we were able to purchase some equipment for the occupational therapist, right? Is that the title? For all students to be able to use, but in particular for the students that she works with. And then in the middle, you can see our very nice new projector and screen. There's also sound equipment that came with that. And that was a real game changer for the PTA and particularly, I think, for Mrs. Zapka also and our gym teacher. They use it constantly. And it's been really nice to have a larger screen in that room and not have students tripping over wires that were all over the floor. It really has made a difference for so many events. In the top right, you can see students playing new xylophones that the PTA was able to help subsidize for our music teacher. The xylophones that they were using were pretty beat up and we only had a couple, I believe. So we were able to provide more xylophones for students to share and use. And then bottom right, the fourth graders got styluses for their iPads. One of the teachers wrote us a grant proposal. Those styluses will stay with the fourth grade classrooms, so the current third graders will get to use them next year. And the feedback we've gotten from that has been pretty good also.
So it has really been Kelly and I's true pleasure and honor to be nominated into this co-presidency position for two years and lead our board and the many, many chairs and just watch the community come together and grow. So we appreciate your time this evening also. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to Katie and Kelly. We're going to shift gears. Tonight, my presentation highlights some of our enhancements and improvements at Hillcrest School. As one of the Phase 1 schools, I'd like to start by saying thank you to the Board of Education, Dr. Russell and our community for the enhancements to our building. These are just a few pictures of our front entry and office. I thought about adding an icon for air conditioning. As you can imagine, that's a big highlight, especially as we're finally seeing some warmer temperatures this spring. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you and show off a quick peek for those who maybe haven't had a chance to stop in person to see the building yet. Keeping with the construction theme, as we started this school year unpacking, we designed a logo for our staff shirts that reinforced the key components of building a successful blueprint towards growth and improvement. These are some of the foundational priorities that support our school goals. Working with our instructional leadership team, we developed a school improvement plan with goals that align to our district priorities and goals. The first goal being to implement the newly adopted English Language Arts Resources with integrity and fidelity. The UFLY Phonics program is an evidence-based approach designed to help students build strong foundational reading skills. The program focuses on systematic explicit instruction in phonics, helping students understand the relationships between letters and sounds. Students in our kindergarten through second grade classrooms participate in UFLY lessons four days a week with progress monitoring on that fifth day. Each of our kindergarten through second grade classrooms has created a sound wall. You can see in the top right picture there. This serves as a visual reference with pictures of correct mouth and tongue placement for each phoneme. There's several different components to each lesson. Oftentimes, it includes manipulation of letter tiles on magnet boards, writing on dry erase boards. UFLY supports our students in becoming confident readers. It strengthens their ability to decode words and improve fluency. Students know these routines and procedures and they're active participants in phonics instruction. Along with UFLY for kindergarten through second grade, we've been working diligently all year with thoughtful implementation of benchmark reading for kindergarten through fifth grade and Common Lit for sixth grade. One of our school improvement goals from last year was tied to the usage of our previous benchmark resource. We had really good success as a school last year and continued to leverage our previous work, which included taking benchmark assessments online. And we just tweaked that a little bit this year with some additional modifications to carry out this goal. You can sort of see our trimesterly plan in terms of rolling out with our younger students working from paper pencil up to online assessments. Each grade level is tracking to be on pace with the grade level scope and sequence. Teachers are using Forefront to update parents on progress. Cover sheets are sent home with each assessment at the conclusion. And Forefront is being used to support our small group targeting specific skills and making those small groups. Implementation has really been a collaborative focus throughout the district with our instructional coaches leading those unit previews. Our instructional leadership team then planned and organized some reflective opportunities for staff throughout the year to share celebrations and certainly talk about areas for potential improvement. Our grade level teams have stayed committed to implementing the programs as they were intended to be. Our second goal is centered around the implementation of the Zones of Regulation. So we're building emotional awareness within a supportive culture and really focusing on student regulation. SEL is integrated into our daily routines. Common areas, Zones visuals are referenced throughout the building in each classroom, throughout our hallways. Calming areas are set up in all of our kindergarten through third grade classrooms and also our specials locations to offer a more consistent level of predictability and support for all of our students. Third through fifth grade students each have a Zones binder that aligns with the lessons and serves as a toolbox to refer to as needed. There's integrations of Zones vocabulary and strategies into our classroom discussions and routines. This slide shows some of the tools that students have at their fingertips. So whether it's breathing or tactile calming strips or grounding method reinforcers, these are just a couple examples. Zones have been a focus topic at our all-school meetings, at our Hillcrest family meetings. We also make an effort to partner with our families to support the carryover skills at home. You can see the Zones at Home suggestions for families. One of the really great outcomes that has resulted from using Zones with kindergarten through fifth grade is that it's normalizing students using a variety of tools to meet their individual needs. You know, for some of our students, that's a calming corner. For other students, it's a breathing strip on their name tag or water bottle, a positive affirmation reminder note, fidgets. The list goes on and on. But as a result of our focused efforts on social emotional learning instruction across all settings, we have seen a significant decrease in both classroom managed and office managed behavior incidents since October. A focus on developing students' self-regulation, emotional awareness and social skills is really helping us to create a safe and supportive learning environment. And then our final goal focuses on consistently using the district-provided mathematics platforms, Dreambox and iExcel, to support students of all ability levels to meet their individual growth targets for math. So Dreambox is an adaptive platform. It blends technology with games and activities. This is really providing us a targeted approach for enrichment opportunities for all of our students, including those who demonstrated low growth previously. There's a weekly usage target of five lessons per week, which is roughly 15 minutes a day that can be accomplished in. Back in September, each student took an initial assessment, the Launchpad, and that creates a personalized learning plan to support individual growth. Since then, teachers have been assigning lessons that align with the Bridges Math Curriculum and State Standards. Third through sixth grade was initially working on both platforms. It was tailored to their fall MAP scores. This winter, we made a decision to shift that and prioritize the consistent use of Dreambox for all grade levels, kindergarten through sixth grade, with that focus of really meeting the individual growth goals using the adaptive platform. So let's keep them motivated. We've hosted several classroom and school-wide incentives to encourage practice. Dreambox stats are shared out at our faculty meetings. In March, we held a Dreambox challenge to focus all students on achieving those targeted five lessons per week. After spring break, we started a month-long Dreambox Spring Showdown. Announcement coming tomorrow on which classroom ended up winning that. And then during February conferences, our teachers use the Dreambox reports to show growth trends based on usage with families. So as a result, the majority of students are engaged and motivated. Students who have completed five or more lessons per week are demonstrating an average of one and a half grade levels of growth in one year's time. So we are really excited about that. And these last few slides here, you know, each month, we report out to our staff on our school improvement goal progress. We reflect, we celebrate, but we also talk about our struggles and, you know, do we need to modify anything? Here's a snapshot of our growth and achievement as a result of our focused efforts with the school improvement plan. This is showing a comparison with the percentages across fall and winter testing periods. So this is comparing to other same-grade students, you know, in the US. Math, we're at the 85th percentile for fall and winter achievement. And the 63rd percentile for growth. For reading, we were at the 80th percentile in the fall, the 83rd percentile for achievement in the winter. And then our growth is at the 64th percentile. Looking at our overall growth summary from ECR, which includes both MAP for kindergarten through sixth grade and then AIMS Web for K1, we're making expected growth for both reading and math. And then finally, looking at the quadrant chart here, it shows our MAP growth norms that are looking at both growth and achievement by grade level, with the 50th percentile representing typical achievement or typical growth based on the MAP growth norms. So in math, all of our grade levels, with the exception of one, are in the high achievement, high growth quadrant. And for reading, the same. All of our grade levels, with the exception of one, are in the high achievement, high growth quadrant. So we're really proud of our students and staff and their work. We're going to be using this information certainly as our instructional leadership team meets this spring and at the beginning of next year to make decisions about, you know, which student groups do we focus on? Where do we best allocate our resources and really focus our time and attention? So Dandy the dog says, "Thank you for having us here."
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And for our Student Council members, we got some gifts for you. Thank you for being here. All right, listed on tonight's agenda are 11 communications the board received. Are there any additional communications a board member would like to share at this time? Okay, then we have two spotlights tonight. We're going to move on. We're going to start with our first one here, which is the K through 5 and 6, 8 transition update.
Good evening, Board. We are going to be giving you an update on our Building for Success Strategic Plan Goal 4. Myself, Mr. Cecil and Mrs. Stewart are going to present just updates on what progress we have made toward this goal. So tonight's discussion topics will be a review of Strategic Plan Goal 4, a short informational slide about our partnership with Bulley and Andrews, our Building for Success Steering Committee, Scheduling and Staffing Subcommittee, Student Service Subcommittee, Transition Subcommittee, and then our ongoing and future work. Before we start with our update, I just want to give a huge shout out to all of our staff members and community members and administrators who served on all of these committees and subcommittees. We could not have done it without them. There's, as you can see, a variety of staff members from both middle schools. Many of our elementary teachers also participated. We had community members, parents and administrators from across the district. So we could not have done any of this work without their help. So just a review of Strategic Plan Goal 4. District 58 will work to ensure smooth transitions to a 6, 8 middle school model for all stakeholders, especially in the first year of transition. And so the updates that we're going to give you this evening, the action plans included creation of a steering committee to review components of various middle school philosophies and then determining our course of action. Also creating subcommittees from the steering committees focused on the following components, which was scheduling and staffing needs, student supports and what the transition looks like. And then we will be moving into next year having school liaisons to support that transition process. We will also identify areas of support and provide staff development for current and future middle school staff members. And then District 58 will communicate early and often about processes and transition occurrences and involve school PTAs in this messaging. So just a little sneak peek. Last week, many of our middle school students participated in a behind-the-fence opportunity with Bulley and Andrews. I want to thank Bulley and Andrews for their partnership. These events were just a delight. The students came out having just so much positivity about the experience getting into those construction areas of the school that they have seen and heard happening but have not been able to get into. So it really was just a wonderful event. The opportunity provided the students an opportunity to introduce various aspects of the construction industry. There were hands-on activities and informational sessions that were led by industry professionals, including members of the Bulley and Andrews team, but as well as our subcontractors, which was fantastic. And then it really did foster an appreciation for the engineering and technology behind this modern infrastructure. So you can see in that top picture, the students in the O'Neill, I believe that is the new kitchen. And then in the bottom picture, that is the Herick Library, where our glass subcontractor was sharing the information about the glass and windows that are used in this construction. So again, just a, you know, great big shout out to our middle school administrators, Ambly and Andrews, for creating this opportunity for our students. So the first part of our Strategic Plan Goal was the creation of our Steering Committee. The first thing we did was ground our work in understanding the essential attributes of a successful middle school. And as you can see in the visual to the right, we're looking at our middle school to be responsive, challenging, empowering, equitable and engaging. Those were all terms that we worked with our staff on defining and making sure that we understood what those meant. And then we answered these two questions. What do we believe about middle school students and their successful learning and growth? And what is the school's role in supporting that vision? So we also were able to build a partnership with AMALE, which is the Association for Middle Level Education. And we went through a middle school model assessment and we analyzed those results and how we are approaching middle school learners at both Herick and O'Neill. And then from there, we determined what our professional learning opportunities we wanted to provide to our staff. We worked on teacher efficacy. We worked on student engagement and then student motivation as well. So the Steering Committee, as we went through our work and wanted to ensure two things, that we were transparent in the work that we were doing with all of our stakeholders and that we were providing communication. So we held many PLM opportunities for collaboration and feedback. Some were interactive, some were more webinar-based, where they were engaging in an online presentation. We also created a middle school model staff dashboard, where anytime we had a presentation, we uploaded that information so that it was a reference tool for all of our staff members. And that was available to them as our work was ongoing. And then we continued to have ongoing staff conversations. As, you know, decisions and plans and templates were made, we wanted to be sure we put those in front of our staff members and continue to gather feedback on that information. So the first subcommittee that we convened was our Scheduling and Staffing Subcommittee. And so our first step was to review our current systems. We looked at our pluses of our current schedule. We looked at some deltas. What are things that we want to take this opportunity in a year of transition to approve upon? And then we planned out our priorities, recognizing that while we prioritize things, there is no perfect. And we didn't want that to be the enemy of the good, right? And so we wanted to make sure that we were prioritizing what was most important to our staff members and what we felt like needed to be part of our middle school schedule. So we studied other middle school schedule examples and we developed a variety of models that met our priorities. Eventually, there was an identification of a potential schedule. So we did a presentation to the staff and we gathered feedback from that. And from there, we reviewed and refined that schedule. And at this time, Mr. Cecil is going to come up and he is going to share some of those updates.
Thank you. So the next slide has the visual of what the middle school bell schedule will look like. Before I move to that, I want to make sure that we kind of have a mental idea of what the current middle school schedule looks like. So currently, a student day at the middle school consists of eight class periods. One of those class periods is lunch with a kind of a half period for lunch and a half period of what is currently sort of a study hall-based time during opposite lunch. We also have band, choir and orchestra that meet before school in sort of a zero hour, or what we call early third-class period. And so that's been our current structure. As we reviewed, there are numerous middle school scheduling options. And as Liz mentioned, the committee went through a variety of possibilities, some extremely creative and outside the box and others not so much. And we kind of landed on recognizing that there are a lot of good things in our schedule, but there were some things that the committee recognized we wanted to try to address in those priorities. One in particular was that right now, for a student to receive additional targeted One in particular was that right now, for a student to receive additional targeted intervention or resource support, they are typically missing one of their classes. That is often an exploratory class or sometimes a science or a social studies class. And one of the things the committee talked about was really trying to find ways to continue to provide students with that support that they need, but also ensuring that we aren't peeling away some of the other classes, like exploratories, where students might find success outside of the more traditional academic environment. And so that was really one of the things we wanted to work through. We also have the confines of, you know, what our student length of day looks like. That corresponds to transportation schedules and teaching schedules and all those kinds, and family schedules and all those kinds of things. So what we ended up with was this. And so this is a nine-period student day for middle schoolers, beginning in 2026, '27. And again, let's be careful to know this is not for next year. We have a whole nother year to really plan the full implementation of this schedule. The student day increases by about 20 minutes. So student classes begin right now at 8:30. First period would begin at 8:20. Student dismissal, I'm looking at Tuesday through Friday then. Student dismissal on Tuesday through Friday is currently 3:17. It would now be 3:27. So we are gaining a few instructional minutes for students across these class periods. Staff will have two preparation periods in here, so their time is basically equaled out as well. Those opportunities are used both for individual teacher planning and preparation, but also in this coming model in a year, there will be some opportunities for group meetings and things like that, because some of our before and after-school meeting time is condensed just a little bit as we start a few minutes earlier and end a few minutes later. One of the pieces of feedback that we received from staff was, "Well, couldn't we just back it all the way up in the morning so that we wouldn't have to push later and wouldn't have to go in both directions?" And the reality is, between transportation concerns across the district and also just the reality of elementary start time and middle school start time for families that maybe aren't using bus services, we really need to recognize that you can't drop a fifth grader off at an elementary school and a seventh grader off at a middle school at the same time. So we need to leave a little bit of a gap in the start time. And then we didn't want to push too much further after school because we get into sports and extracurriculars and things like that. So that's the timing of the class periods. So for the student day then, students will now have a nine-period day, which is everything they currently have. Two periods assigned for English and language arts, one for math, one for science, one for social studies, one for physical education, one for lunch. An opposite lunch will now be the advisory period. That's another shift. Right now, we have advisory as the first 15 minutes or so of each day. And this will now become the time opposite lunch that will be used for those advisory-based activities, as well as some other, you know, opportunities to connect with students and things like that during the day. So that's seven periods. The remaining two periods of the student day are now sort of, I don't want to say flexible periods, but they can be, one can be an exploratory, two could be exploratories, one could be a student support period and one could be an exploratory, like a resource or intervention. Also, we're going to put performing music during the day. So a student who is in band, choir, or orchestra, one of those class periods would be used for band, choir, or orchestra. And then obviously, foreign language is part of that exploratory track as well. So over the course of 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, students could theoretically experience six periods of exploratory classes or some combination of all of those things we've laid out. The one commitment we've made is that we wouldn't want a student to be pulled from both of those periods for academic support. Even if a student had significant needs, we would still look to the educational team to make decisions around those class periods so that one period remained to be an exploratory class or something that would be an additional opportunity for those students. The other thing that you'll notice in this schedule is that there is some gray shading of the lunch periods. So we wanted to design a schedule that allowed for our similar lunch structure, but also allowed the opportunity, if it makes sense in building schedules, to separate lunches by grade level. Currently, at Herrick, we have lunches separated by 7th and 8th grade. At O'Neill, we do not, just based on some of the scheduling complexities. But this will give us an opportunity in the future to have those lunch periods. And so that means we have six periods that have an A and a B lunch period as we're going through. And in order to take a look at what the timing of student and staff lunch would be, we looked at a version where we kept 4th period everything lined up. And that meant that on, you know, if you look at where 7th period begins on Monday, that would mean that the first lunch would begin at 10 o'clock, which kind of feels like a little close to arrival when we're looking at that. If we were to keep periods the way they are and go with a 5, 6, 7 lunch, if you look at the Tuesday, Friday schedule, that means the last lunch period wouldn't end until almost 2 o'clock. And so we didn't love either of those options. So what we end up with is a schedule in with on Mondays, because of the shortened class periods to accomplish professional learning Mondays, we are flipping 7th period to occur before 4th period, which is a little out of the ordinary. But once we've run it for a few weeks, I think it will be something we'll get very used to. We do things like this during testing weeks and things like that to accomplish different periods of time during the day, so it's not uncommon at all for students. The one other thing that's a little bit different is we will have three-minute passing periods for the majority of between classes. We currently have four-minute passing periods. However, with the new construction of the buildings, the way things are going to be laid out, the way we'll be able to place classes in the buildings, and really recognizing that for the past year or so, Herrick in particular, has been ringing a bell at 3 minutes to kind of indicate this is almost the end of passing period. And when you watch that bell ring, maybe not so much in May, but certainly in like February and October, it is definitely a moment where the hallways are relatively clear of students. So we believe it can be done. There are a couple of four-minute passing periods around the lunch periods and to kind of make sure that some of those lunch periods actually add up to the right number of minutes for staff as we are obligated by school code to do some of those things as well. There's a lot more detail we could go into. That was almost probably too much for tonight, but those are really the priorities we're trying to look at with this schedule. So again, highlighting the nine-period day, I think that's on the next slide, highlighting the nine-period day for students, which gives us exploratory and intervention, that start and end moving a little bit, which does actually increase student instructional time overall, moving away from the early bird, putting the advisory opposite lunch, and really kind of maintaining sort of that consistent piece across the board. So we're excited about what that looks like. We brought it to staff, this final version, before we brought it to the board and the community. And, you know, there are still some questions out there. Well, how will this work and how will that work? And I think we're at the point now where we need to plan for it and live it and recognize that we're not, we're committing to a schedule for '26, '27. In, you know, in the 24 years I've been in the district, we've had five or six iterations of the middle school bell schedule. So we're not saying this has to be what it is for a decade. We're saying that we want to work through this, that we think it meets our priorities. There could be some small tweaks in the future and we'll see what it looks like. But for now, our next step is to now build around this and then live it for a year and see what it looks like. The staffing component then of this is now that we have a schedule and we kind of know what that shell is going to look like, we can get more specific about what those staffing transitions will look like. And so when we talk about our certified staff, our focus is always on equitable staffing across the entire district. And with this transition, it also is a focus on maintaining our current FTE, that's Full Time Equivalent Numbers, as we're looking. So basically, the same number of staffing positions we have to meet the needs of our almost 5,000 students now, we anticipate using that same number of staffing positions to meet the needs of those students when we reconfigure things a little bit. What that means then is it's not an increase of resources, it's a reallocation of resources. And so we're recognizing that that really is going, you know, requires a lot of work in terms of what will that look like? In some cases, it's a little more straightforward. If you have a 6th grade teacher, there won't be a 6th grade class in their school. They move as a whole person. That's straightforward. When you have an elementary art teacher, for example, 6th grade will move, but that is two sections of that person's weekly schedule, moving out of one building and then a couple out of another building as they share buildings. So it's not as pure and simple as just picking up one person and moving them to the middle school. The same is true with resource teachers, with intervention teachers, with related services staff. These are teachers who serve the, you know, a wider grade level or grade span or sometimes the entire grade span in our elementary building. So you can't just take 1/7 of people from buildings and move them over. So there are a lot of moving parts to this staffing transition. What we're trying to do right now is to communicate with people this year, before the end of the year, as best we are able, with the information we have today, here is what we anticipate that you would be doing in '26, '27, with the thinking of then, that gives people a year to work into an anticipated transition, to try to make some connections, to think about student transitions, to look at professional learning opportunities in some of those specific middle school content areas. And so we're working through all of that. We've also sent out an interest survey to all certified staff to say if you are, if you were ever interested in middle school, now is probably the time to let us know in the event that we have to, that we do end up moving people who aren't necessarily immediately obvious. If we have, you know, if all of our 6th grade teachers don't go over, because there are a few who've expressed interest in staying in elementary buildings, if possible. And so that will be part of that transition planning as well. We won't be able to meet everyone's perfect choice. You know, but we're going to do our very best to place people in positions in '26, '27 that are going to be exciting for them and that we think are going to be outstanding for our students. And so again, as I said, we're working on sharing those tentative plans, all of those conversations rooted or beginning with the phrase, "Based on the information we have today," because as we all know, many things can happen over the course of a year. Similarly, with our instructional assistance and even with custodial support, as buildings get larger in scope and have more going on there, we are looking at the same plan, basically, keeping that equitable, but also recognizing that the same number of humans who meet our needs now will likely be the same number when we're in a slightly different configuration. And so we're going to begin that, you know, interest solicitation process in the fall of 2025 to get a sense of who might be interested in moving over to the middle school. You know, with instructional assistance, those staffing allocations really follow student need for the most part. And so it's a little, it's a little more tentative until we get closer to looking at who will the actually, where will the students actually be, I should say, in '26, '27? And then how do we allocate the instructional assistance appropriately? But similarly, we want to try by the middle of next school year to be able to have conversations with those affected staff so that they have time to prepare in all the appropriate ways as well.
And then the Student Services Subcommittee really went through a lot of the same exercises that our General Education subcommittees did, really starting with looking at those five essential elements of middle school models and analyzing how our current systems are already doing that and where are the opportunities for us to really strengthen what we're putting together to make sure that all students can be successful in their programming at the middle school. We also reached out to various middle schools in the area to learn what some of their models looked like and were surprised and pleased to find that a lot of the things that were being offered in other places were models that we maybe had considered in the past or had ran in the past and moved away from because of other opportunities we were able to create in both of our buildings. One of the core values of special education in our district is really that every student is a general education student first. And so the work of the Student Services Committee has been somewhat dependent on the work of all the committees that we just heard about. We don't want to develop a separate schedule that doesn't mesh really well with what students are able to access within general education, because that's where it's at. That's where we want our students being educated, if they're able to be successful there. And what we've done from there is just really build out a flexible system that would allow a student to receive a small amount of support, if that's all that they need to be successful, all the way, as you are aware, to getting to really participating really more fully in a specialized program. Along those lines too, we've been very excited about thinking about spaces for specialized programs. We're always looking for opportunities for students to have their motor needs met, to have spaces for calming, life skills instruction. And so I think both of our middle schools with the changes that are underway are really going to be able to meet the needs of a wide variety of diverse learners. And then finally, one of the things that this newest exploratory model is going to offer, which we've been planning for, for a couple of years now, is just thinking about how we really can capitalize on creating opportunities for general education students to really partner and get to know and just develop friendships with our students who have more significant needs. So we're really looking at that exploratory offering as being an opportunity as students move through 6th, 7th, and 8th, to do some reverse inclusion, to do some peer partners. It's going to be, I think, a great opportunity for everybody. And then there is the work of moving everybody over. So that 6th grade year for families of students with IEPs and 504s is always a really stressful one, is families work to envision, what does support look like when my student gets to middle school? It's such an unknown environment. And next year, we're going to, we're going to double that. We're going to double the students, we're going to double the parents, we're going to double the need for staff to be supporting those conversations and meetings. And during all of that, we have to make sure that we're actually delivering the services that students are entitled to. So there is an entire committee that is working on scheduling and supporting this process. I think one of our biggest priorities, starting in the fall, is going to be to educate families on what these models are going to look like so that meeting time is really focused on the individual needs of students and not overviewing what the general models are going to look like for special education in both systems. We're looking to kind of hit the ground running in October with starting some of our transition models or transition meetings and then trying to get done prior to spring break so that we can really work on the scheduling structures for staff before the year ends. And then finally, you're aware that we've developed an administrative position that is going to be dedicated to middle school special education. And their first priority next year is going to be really helping our families plan for this transition. They will be attending our 5th and 6th grade transition meetings and then following those students over to the middle school to welcome them on the other side. And then kind of the final work of this committee is thinking about case management structures. And I think we're really looking at a model that looks different for incoming students next year than what it looks like for students that have already been at the middle school. So that really, at that 6th grade level in particular, moving forward, you know, we have a case manager who is very much tied to the student, whereas currently within our middle school system, they're tied more to content. So we look forward to sharing more about that.
So in addition to the transition work within the Special Education Subcommittee, the Transition Subcommittee has also been meeting and there's been great collaboration among staff members from both the middle schools as well as 5th and 6th grade teachers. The 5th and 6th grade teachers really want to partner and make sure that that transition is a smooth one for all of our students. I've mentioned this before, but, you know, we are transitioning 2/3 of our middle school over to Herrick and O'Neill in the '26, '27 school year. And so our 5th grade teachers are new to this transition model and they want to be partners with our middle school staff, just as our 6th grade teachers are. Our work was grounded in being mindful of experiences and opportunities for both 5th and 6th graders as they transition to middle school. That was really important. We wanted to make sure that our 6th graders still felt that specialness of being the oldest in the building and some of their responsibilities that they take on as the oldest grade level. We also wanted to make sure that our 5th graders didn't feel like they weren't being offered some of those opportunities. Now, each elementary school is vastly different in the way that they approach these responsibilities and the things that they do for their 5th, or for their current 6th graders. And so we really did leave a lot of those building-specific level decisions to the administration and the PTA's. We don't want to say that everyone has to do X when it doesn't fit with the way a school kind of runs their day-to-day. We didn't want to say that, you know, you have to have this type of celebration at the end of the year. Everyone has built their systems and built their celebrations for their students. We wanted to keep it authentic to the school. And so between the administration and the PTA's, they will be developing that, recognizing that we want experiences for both our 5th graders and our 6th graders in the upcoming school year. Some of the things that will be quite uniformed is we're going to do a curriculum night overview. It'll be a couple of slides for 5th and 6th grade teachers to share at elementary curriculum nights that really just kind of showcase what this transition will look like and what some of the events are. That's something that our 5th grade teachers really were, that were part of our Transition Subcommittee really spoke to is wanting to know what that looks like and being able to share that with their families because it's new to them as well. We'll continue our counselor visits and make sure that those happen for our 5th and 6th grade students. And we'll continue our future Senator and future Spartan Nights. Those have been really well received, the last few years especially. And we just love the opportunity to get our families into our middle schools and they'll be able to see that new construction as well, which is exciting. Sneak preview, which is provided by the Downers Grove District 58 Education Foundation, that happens at both middle schools, recognizing that those will be larger groups in that year. And so we'll be planning for that as well. Sneak preview happens a few days before school starts so that the students get the opportunity to get into the buildings. And then we'll have our typical welcome events for the '26, '27 school year, including locker night and curriculum nights to welcome everyone into the schools. So from there, there is still ongoing and future work. So that's kind of the history of what we've gone, the journey we've gone through this past school year. And so some middle school updates. We will be bringing our staff alongside the work, gathering feedback and input throughout, along the way. Right now, we have started building out our exploratory classes and mapping out curriculum. That will be an ongoing process next year. We are excited about the opportunity. And what we didn't want to do was just take what 6th graders are currently doing at the elementary school and plop it into a five-day-a-week class at the middle school. And so we're really being thoughtful about how we are planning out our exploratory offerings while recognizing that we're also going to build some new and exciting classes for our students. So we're really looking forward to that work. We're going to be providing professional learning to staff who are transitioning to the middle school from the elementary school, teaching full subjects versus a whole grade level of subjects is going to be a little bit different. So we want to make sure that they have the supports that they need to feel successful. We're going to start that increased communication with families across the district. We'll see this in a variety of ways. We'll have updates in elementary newsletters, but a lot of information will also start coming in Communicate 58 for the entire district to see. And then we're going to review how And then we're going to review how extracurricular activities and athletics look at a six, eighth middle school model. So that is something that right now is very high level. We haven't gotten into the weeds of that yet. But looking at what opportunities do we want to make sure we have available in terms of extracurriculars? And then also, what do our athletics look like? Now that we've been in this conference for one year, we're kind of doing a review of how that year went. But we want to see what can it look like when our sixth graders are at the middle schools as well. And then additionally, we of course have elementary school updates. And so the principal, we have a principal working group that has started to determine some space prioritization as we move our sixth graders out of our elementary schools. Some of the priorities that we've identified, and again, these are just examples, not anything that we've set in stone yet, is, you know, some of our schools are really looking for that dedicated conference room space, designated room for specials, not having art or music on a cart if we can avoid it. And then having some identified spaces for our specialist and related service staff. So again, these are just examples, but we're looking at what are our priorities? And what do we want to make sure is maintained across our elementary schools? Now, we have our construction updates. As Mrs. Eppka shared, she shared some pictures from our Phase One schools. Our Phase Two school construction will begin this summer, which the work includes secure entrances and comprehensive HVAC. And I'm sure you're going to get a bigger update during the construction update next. And then those Phase Three design meetings are happening as well. As Jessica shared, our elementary school transition teams are working to support our IEPM 504 transition meetings. And then we're talking about ways to make those connections across buildings. So we're going to be offering our outdoor education opportunities for our fifth and sixth graders in the upcoming school year. We just wrapped up our outdoor education experience for our sixth graders last week. So we're in the process of gathering feedback about those events and then seeing, making sure that that is the location that we are, fingers crossed, finally going to kind of land on as our, as our home base for outdoor education. And then starting to plan what those experiences can look like for our fifth and sixth graders, recognizing that we are going to want our fifth graders to go together and our sixth graders to go together. We don't want it to be one trip for all of the, you know, Elsieira fifth and sixth graders. We want to make sure that the fifth graders from Elsieira have that experience with the fifth graders from Fairmount, for example. And so we want to make sure that we're, we're keeping the spirit of outdoor ed in our planning process. And then scheduling out those counselor visits so we know ahead of time how many visits we're going to need in order to meet with all of the students.
I get to close this out on a presentation that's mostly talking about middle school to talk about our little learners, which we have not forgotten about, our three and four-year-olds, our preschool and early childhood program. Really since its inception, and I've been here 10 years, and the program probably is even 10 years beyond that in getting started, we've been at two sites, Henry Puffer and Indian Trail. And one of the really positive outcomes of thinking about adding space in one of the buildings is that we really do believe that we can offer Grove Children's Preschool in one location for the first time ever. That means more collaboration time for our staff. It means a sharing of resources, it means flexibility with class placement. So we're really excited to kind of buckle down and take a look at that, so. All right, now open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the board?
I have a couple of questions. I can start with scheduling, and I know everything is in flux, or I can start there too. I guess wherever you want me to start. A couple of questions I had on the scheduling bit was, we're now looking at maybe a five-minute difference between elementary start and middle school start. And having children at Pierce Downer and at Herrick, that is a traffic nightmare waiting to happen. And we're moving our early birds into that traffic flow. So my suggestion would be just to kind of study that a little bit, to make sure that with the new drive and all of that stuff, that it's going to help alleviate some of that. I'm sure that there are other parents who are thinking about, I have five minutes to get from the elementary school to the middle school, which is quite a task when you have children who are slow some mornings. So it's something to think about. We used to have advisory in the front because we thought it was a good opportunity for kids who had forgotten iPads or binders or something that they needed a parent to drop off. So curious what we'll have to, so that they weren't wasting class, class time at the beginning. I think we did that either a year ago or two years ago. So another one to, that I'd like to kind of get a better idea of. I will say that that advisory switch does match high school, as does the lunch period thing. Like there's lunch periods that start in high school at 10:30, ones that go at 1:30. So that does match up with the high school a little bit, so that would be fine. I'd like to hear a little bit about our gifted plan. What are we doing with those kids that are going to move? Like, are the fifth graders now going to travel to the middle school still? Are we changing that program at all? Because right now, don't they move to different locations and how is that going to work? I know there's some that go-
That's gifted versus accelerated math, having two different things.
Yeah, both would be nice to get a little view of. I've got a lot, I mean, I'll go quick because I know that these are all things that are kind of like, tell me later, you don't have to tell me now. I'm not going to put you on the spot today, we've got a little bit of time. Another one on transition that I thought would be important now that I saw these like potential changes is can we talk about the plan for seventh graders who are going to have different experience in eighth grade than they had in seventh? With the scheduling changes and the exploratories and the early birds and all the things that might be a little bit different for them? I know that's adding more students to accommodate change for, but they're going to go through a change too, so probably important. And then a couple of things that I kind of, I'd like to know more. Like, I, I think staffing update middle of next school year feels a little late to me. I know it's probably not, but I'd like to, I'd like to have a good idea sometime in the early fall maybe of like a tracker of our number of students. I know you're tracking it, Justin, I know you are. A tracker of like the number of students based on, that we have currently. And then what, what our staffing plan is for those students already that have, you know, either special needs, IEPs, or also just the generalized, right? What do we, what do we think it's going to look like? Even if it's very boldly disclaimered, which it will have to be, but I know you're looking at it. So if I can just see it, it'd be helpful. Sorry, I'm almost done. Last one was, I, I picked up on the exploratory example of the, if a child needs a support period, will they also be able to engage in like all the exploratories equitably that they would like to explore? Early bird, you know, I think the band and orchestra students and choir students are going to be thrilled that they do not have to be at school at 7:45 a.m. So I think that's a great move. But I would like to make sure that there's like an equitable kind of thing there. And that's all I have. So I don't need a lot of commentary back today. Because you guys, this is amazing. Last comment is just thank you 10 million times over to everyone on the committees and the subcommittees and all the time that they've spent on it. Shout out, put it in the minutes, they're amazing and they need that shout out. So thank you to you guys for leading it up and thank you to all of them for being a part of it.
We can get you some more detailed, you know, answers to, to those questions. But, you know, just kind of from, from a high level, yes, we are planning for that transition of math acceleration. Right now, we have, you know, fifth and sixth graders that travel over to the element, or to the middle school for single and double accelerated. We'll just be doing that a year earlier. But we also have less students who are double accelerated at fourth grade. And so the numbers will shift. And what will, what that will shift is just how many sections of elementary math acceleration we need available at the middle school and then what our transportation needs are as well. In terms of gifted, we have already started kind of that transition, right? Because we're, we have our elementary gifted happening at our elementary schools. So next year, that will be our fourth and fifth graders. And our sixth graders will be the only group traveling to Henry Puffer next school year. And so then when we make that transition to the six, eight middle schools, we will, we will be starting by looking at gifted ELA classes for sixth and the eighth grade.
That's right, you told us that.
And so we'll start looking at that.
That was for the audience to hear.
No, it's perfect. No, absolutely. We're also having lots of conversations about, you know, what other, you know, experiences do we want to make sure that we have available? And so that's still in the working phases, but definitely starting with, at a minimum, the gifted ELA classes.
I remember that, I do.
And I think to the rest, like, yeah, there are a couple of things that we're talking about mid-year, but we're still working out the schedule of how we're going to bring some of these things back to the board and the public. So certainly we can take all of that, all of the things you've asked and as we're able to bring back information that will actually, you know, I don't want to try to go off the cuff with all of it, but I think we can look at where are the right intervals to bring some of that back. So thank you, absolutely.
And then spaces in elementary schools prioritize students first, always, so. In my, in my humble, humble way.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Thank you, Member Ellis. Other questions or comments?
I had one just question for takeaway also. It was related, Justin, to something you mentioned related to picking staff preferences. Just when the time is right, if people want to understand how the criteria is set for selections of who stays, who moves up first, but also then the mixture. Because I imagine you're not only moving up into sixth, but thinking about the mixture of existing some of the eighth and sixth. I think that'd be helpful for Communicate to understand.
Absolutely.
I think that this information is great and very helpful, especially for someone newer to this position. I think as we move on, what, having something like an FAQ, a frequently asked question dashboard, since I'm sure we will all have very similar questions and parents will too, will help them feel more engaged in the process. And especially maybe cut down on the workload for all of you and your local building administrators of having that kind of an essential place where people can submit questions and then have those answered.
Love that idea.
Win-win for everyone.
That helped a ton during the referendum, so I appreciate that suggestion.
I have a couple of questions and comments, I guess. Kind of piggybacking off of what Bernard was just mentioning about kind of teacher placement and certification and things like that. And I think we've kind of touched on this a little bit before, but in terms of certification, especially for those sixth grade teachers who are going to move over. You mentioned like professional learning for those teachers and things like that. But obviously, I'm sure there's some of those teachers that don't necessarily have middle school endorsements or content area endorsements necessarily. Is there going to be assistance and things like that provided to those teachers who might need to say, okay, I, I'm not just a elementary, you know, I'm, I'm elementary certified, but I need to specialize in a particular content. Are we going to assist with that so that they're not just kind of wandering or happy to take it all on themselves?
It's a great question. So by this time last year, I had met with everyone who was currently teaching sixth grade at that point to build out a, okay, let's look at your endorsements, let's look at what you have and don't have, and let's talk about what your preferences might be. And so anyone who was teaching sixth grade, just about anyone who was teaching sixth grade at that point, has kind of a plan. A couple of people have taken and finished some classes, you know, be, last summer and even over this year to get to that point. So, and, and since that time, we haven't placed anyone into sixth grade, nor in most, nor really will we next year without a plan, who isn't middle school endorsed in some way. Do you know, so we already, we've tried to, to get over that hurdle. There are a couple of people whose endorsements won't necessarily exactly line up. And so we're already working, yes, individually to say, what will that look like? I've committed to all current sixth grade teachers and we're working with related services and all of those people that we have on the slides that in the next nine days, we are going to connect in some way before the end of the school year to have that plan again. So there is, so if someone said, well, if I took this summer class, could that change for me? Or this, we would, they would still have time for that. But really, we started that process a whole year ago. So the, the majority of people who are teaching sixth grade now have already expressed both a preference and an alignment with endorsements that they have, or the understanding that they either need to start thinking about endorsements or we need to be looking for an elementary placement for them. Which again, we've been that, there have been a lot of those dominoes over the past two years already, just looking forward at those kinds of things. So yeah, so the answer, the short answer to your question is yes, we are working with all those teachers and doing everything we can.
Oh, that sounds good. Thank you, I appreciate that. And then another question I had, kind of just about the middle school model, planning, exploring, et cetera. And we've talked about this in previous meetings as well as in terms of talking about like, can, are we working towards or are we do, have we thought about incorporating more of that like team, like a traditional middle school teaming type of situation? Is that on the agenda? Are we considering that? Is, have we ruled that out? Any thoughts on that right now?
I would say the, the, the concepts of teams and what that looks like is very much still part of the conversation. I think we're all hesitant to say we're going to have, we're going, I'm hesitant to say, yes, we're going to have a team structure today for a few reasons. Just because that brings up a lot of specific elements for people. And I don't know that we'll be able to accomplish every one of those specific elements. However, the things, there are many of the qualities of the traditional teaming structure that we are very much working to build into. And we're part of the consideration of creating the schedule. In fact, the way it is and the way we'll be able to assemble teachers, the way we'll assemble physical space and things like that. So that is, it is, it is definitely a work in progress. And I think there is still a lot of interest in, you know, getting as close as we can to teams in certain ways. I'm, you know, again, I want to, I don't, I never want to overpromise because we just have to look at numbers and how that breaks out. And our math, well, and our math plan is a great example of, you know, we have, we have, you know, next year, we will have sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in eighth grade math. And so that eighth grade math teacher can't be on a pure team. Do you know what I mean? And yet, there are ways to configure some things to bring about the benefits of a teaming structure without, so that, so that, that's kind of the way we've, we've worked through that conversation. And then we've definitely heard the, the interest in, you know, getting to that, that model where we are making, you know, because what are the benefits of a teaming structure? Stronger connections with students, all of those kinds of things. We want to incorporate all of that as much as we can.
Perfect, awesome. And then a question on like kind of support staff, special service staff, things along those lines, like social workers, speech therapists, occupational therapists, nurses, all those kinds of, of resources. I'm sure there's been thought about how do we make that transition from moving a group of students, you know, from fifth grade into, you know, the sixth grade into the middle school and how that's going to kind of change things, obviously, in terms of, of caseloads and things like that for those people. But just something I would like to hear about also, like in a future report of some sort to look at what, what the plan is in that regard. And then I had a question on, Jessica, you mentioned about the dedicated middle school special ed coordinator. And I'm just curious, just for clarification, I might have missed this at a previous meeting when I was not here. There was, is that person going to be overseeing all of the middle school special ed? Like in terms of those students who just receive resources support as well as special programming? Or are the special program coordinators still going to be, like, what is that going to look like at middle school?
Yeah, so the, the middle school special education coordinator is going to take all of the middle school special education programs and resource program. So they're going to be dedicated to that middle level learner developmentally. I do anticipate when you look at the work of special education and the amount of meetings that we will, you know, we will still have really strong partners with both of our principals and our assistant principal teams. But the lead for that at both middle schools will be this new position.
So like, for example, like Lauren Hertilius is not going to be overseeing middle school best. The middle school coordinator will oversee that and so on and so forth. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that clarification. Sorry, just a couple of other questions. We talked about the use of the resource of the additional periods, adding, making a nine-period day, being able to use that additional period towards potential resource intervention support. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be in place of one of the explored, most, most often in place of one of the exploratory courses. How, or do you have a plan for how to address kind of fluidity within that need for resource or intervention support? Like if a student is identified halfway through the year and they're in the middle of an exploratory class and then we're going to take, like how, any thoughts on kind of the fluidity and in and out nature of that type of need in conjunction with the big schedule?
Yeah, I think that is some of the work that's ahead of us next year in terms of what those, that intervention structure is going to look like. But I do believe that we'll be setting some of our benchmarks for data review to align with natural transitions so that we avoid some of that kind of awkward, I'm leaving in the middle of something that in middle school I probably don't want to.
Most of the exploratory classes are trimester length. And so that does align already organically with some of that benchmarking.
Okay, cool. My last thing, I think, is really just more of a comment on, in the very beginning of this topic, we talked about the partnership with Bullion Andrews at the middle school for the presentations to show the students. That was awesome. I have a seventh grader. It was really cool. I think it's an amazing way to expose our students to potential careers in the trade that I don't think we get enough exposure to in our area. I think it's hugely beneficial for kids to see that there are those opportunities available when maybe they might not be looking at potentially a college path or whatever the case may be, or that's just an interest for them. It was really cool. I really appreciated it. My child really appreciated it. I liked that partnership a lot. So thank you for that.
And Emily, just to kind of piggyback off of that, there's been a great deal of movement and conversation at the high school level where, you know, 10 or 15 years ago, it was college for all. Certainly, college is a very important avenue, but not every child is going to go to college. And there are also several opportunities in their career, or in careers, excuse me, that they can be very successful in. So I think what you're starting to see in, in high school in particular is a shift back to more of those types of classes to give kids more opportunities and like not select the college path.
Right, I thought that was really great, so thank you. Thank you for all that info.
I have a couple of items. I won't repeat anything that was already named. As, maybe I'll piggyback, I'll start off with where my last comment was on what Member Hannah just named. I wonder if there are opportunities now, right now, when we're in this moment, we're looking at middle school with a magna- I wonder if there are opportunities now, right now, when we're in this moment, we're looking at middle school with a magnifying glass, given all the changes that we're going to be experiencing. Not that we may not have done this before, but this is an opportune time when people can experience change all together as opposed to trying to do it in sometimes in pieces. I wonder if there's an opportunity with our strong partnership with 99 to understand, what is it that 99 sees in students coming from 58 or from other, especially as Dr. Russell's main aiming on changes that high schools are expected to experience over the next five to 10 years? What are things that we can do as an elementary district to make more prepared students going into high school? We will now have three years of middle school experience and we will be playing with the schedule. We will be playing with exploratory options. What are things that they're noticing in eighth grader coming to a counseling meeting, making some choices about ninth grade coursework? And places where those counselors are noticing a, either a gap or a lack of knowledge or a lack of interest that we can find ways to infuse in middle school? So I wonder if there's an opportunity just to talk to our 99 peers, which certainly likely is already happening. And what are we learning from that to infuse into our middle school plan? You don't have to respond to that right now, but just a thought.
Yep, we actually have an articulation meeting scheduled for Wednesday. And then we have a couple more scheduled for next year. So that is definitely on our radar of ways to ensure that our middle school experience is preparing them for that high school experience moving forward. So absolutely.
What comes out of that? I'd love to hear what comes out of it.
Absolutely.
Maybe just a pin in that one for later. I'm going to be a sixth grade parent next year, so I'm speaking from a parent hat, but also from like my peers that are all going to be going through that next year. And those that will be fifth grade parents and going through it as well. This is not our first rodeo, having parents transition along with their students transition to a middle school mindset. And so I, I wonder like, what, what do parents get in terms of knowing what their last year of elementary is going to look like from a middle school perspective? Like I'm thinking about, well, here are the seven things you should plan to check off your list before the, you know, last day of sixth grade.
Yep.
You should plan to go to orientation. You should plan to go to locker day. Whatever, like whatever those things are that are just foreign language at this point to us as elementary parents. I wonder if you will offer that transition checklist that helps a parent and mainly a student also understand what they can expect in this scary world that is going to be their hair at O'Neal.
You know what? I love that. At our last steering committee meeting, we were talking about what the slides for curriculum night needed to kind of include. And while we don't want to overtake the fifth or sixth grade curriculum night, because there is an entire school year of, of information that, that those teachers need to get through. We want to provide like kind of that overview of what to expect. But then the plan is to kind of have a handout or something that is shareable with the parents so that there is almost like that checklist of like, here are the things that you can anticipate. Here are the dates that you should have on your calendar. And then here are some of the things that we recognize that, you know, our, our incoming seventh graders sometimes maybe struggle with or, or need some supports with so that you can start to have conversations with your fifth and sixth graders about those things moving forward.
Yeah, I think too, to piggyback off of that, another big event for all next year will be fifth and sixth grade parents, but especially for sixth grade parents, we just had these a couple of weeks ago, future Spartan and, and future Senator night, where parents can come in prior to the end of sixth grade, fifth grade as well next year to hear a lot of those things. I think one of the things that we're always sensitive to, when you're at curriculum night in September next year and you're hearing about this transition that is going to come the following September, seems like a very long, far, you know, thing away. When you start to get to this time of year, then all of a sudden everybody's ears kind of perk up. And that is exactly why we have those incoming sixth grade next year, again, fifth grade nights to put those things back on people's radar. So I think what you're hearing is, you know, we will continue to do all those things that Liz shared, but also those parent nights are so important for those transitions.
And I'll say correct, as someone, I've had two kids now go from elementary to middle. And I've had both middle schools here and O'Neal, so I've kind of seen the whole spectrum of all the communication. If they do a really good job, like the elementary schools will, the principals will include updates, reminders about those future middle schooler nights and things like that. And kind of things that the parents should be looking out for communications coming from middle schools. They, your elementary principal will include that in their weekly emails as well, giving you reminders, giving you heads up. So I feel like they prep you pretty well in advance to say like, here's some of the things that are going to be coming up for the sixth graders and then future, you know, next year, fifth graders as well, as you're kind of like. And so as, so it's not all going to come in the beginning and then nothing until the end, they will be sharing kind of throughout. That was my experience.
We also give time for the students to spend some time in the middle school beforehand. And they do it again, like right before the, the school year starts. They can fit it with their locker, they can walk their schedule, they can meet the staff. Like I remember towards the end of sixth grade, like this time of year, feeling a little bit off, like what is it going to? And then all of a sudden, the very end of sixth grade and then right as seventh grade was about to start, like my comfort level all of a sudden getting really good and my kids' comfort level. That strength building up, especially that like week leading into the start of the new school year. So yeah, you guys have been doing a really nice, nice job with that. It's going to be a large group though.
Yeah, yeah, we're preparing for that.
Good news is we have these big gyms that can fit a lot of people once we get them. So we're, we're excited about that. We, we know next year, I think Jessica did such a great job alluding to it. Next year's just going to be a lot, you know, when you have two grade levels. But really trying to be deliberate about making our sixth graders feel special and our fifth graders feel special. And then when they come to sneak preview, I can't underscore sneak preview enough in terms of the importance of just relieving that anxiety of our fifth and sixth graders when they transition over. Sneak preview is a wonderful program. We've had it in the district for over 20 years. It's unique to District 58, but it does go a very, very long way with the kids.
Well, the fourth and fifth graders are already talking about it like a lot. I hear it all the time from my fifth grader and then I hear it from fourth, but like you hear it everywhere. Kick Bowl this year, it was all the rage, like you're, we're, we're going to go at the same time, like what's it? So they're, the kids are already thinking about it now. So I think partnering with PTAs like you guys are doing, so brilliant, very important because they're really the heartbeat of the school. They know what's going on from a parent perspective like no other. And then maybe having something at the elementary schools in addition to, like toward the end of the year, in addition to what Eric and O'Neal already do, just to kind of give a little extra, like everything's going to be okay.
Yep.
You know, you guys are doing a fantastic job so far, so.
Thank you.
Just a final kind of closing. First of all, I want to, one of the things I want to thank you guys with right off the bat is the focus that you guys had right out of, out of the gate with the focusing on the number of minutes that the kids have in the classroom. This is one of the first times I feel like we've talked about expanding the amount of minutes that our students are getting. And so that was a really welcome phrase to hear. The idea of the exploratory and getting in, into two periods, I think this is a nice idea. I'd also like to hear though, as we move forward, how we see using those. And then expect, you alluded to it earlier, remember Alice, where we were talking about, if we have a seventh grade group this year and now they're going to be going into eighth grade, are we looking at some of those courses where this builds off of that one? Now that you have two periods and you have three years to go through it? I'd be interested to know how we plan on utilizing that. I also think this creates an incredible opportunity. I know we're already pulling kids out of the exploratory classes to do their interventions. Now giving everybody an opportunity to have that experience, I think is a really incredible opportunity. I do also think that the, removing the early bird is going to be a, a welcome component as well. Yeah, so that transition of what that looks like, somebody mentioned it earlier, that we also are changing the experience from the current incoming seventh graders going into eighth grade. So what does that transition look like for them when the bell schedule changes, et cetera there? But otherwise, I think this was, what we've been hungry for was to kind of get a taste of, of what that year is, is going to look like. I, I know, because I spoke with some of the, the teachers, that they've already been talking about maybe where they could, they could be in, in a year from now. So I appreciate you reiterating the work that you've been doing that and, and tracking down the certifications and everything that's needed. I know this is, that's some of the, the biggest challenge that we have is just making sure we have the, the placement there. Just another reiteration, we talked about changing some of these roles. I just want to reiterate that while it's a new position, we're really staying, we actually cut an FTE in our, in the administrative level. We've just now, as we're moving along, have sort of rejiggered the, the roles of those coordinators. So we've kind of shifted that a little bit, as opposed to creating a position out of whole cloth. So I just, just wanted to make sure I mentioned that as well. But I appreciate that. That was, that was really welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a second spotlight tonight, construction update. So I'd like to welcome Jordan with Huff and Keel. Good to see you.
Likewise. Great. Thank you. Good evening, administrators and members of the board. Jordan Schultz from the Huff and Keel Forge team, and Jennifer is here as well from our team. And then Ben from the Bullion Andrews team. They're my phone and friend. In case I get stuck. The fun part is always the photos first, and I think someone alluded to that earlier. So here is from Herrick. The, the one photo of the very dirty room is the old boiler getting disassembled. So as soon as the, that is not the new work, lest you get confused. But as soon as the, the heat was able to be turned off, this, this demo was able to commence, which is, which is a big deal to transition because there's a lot of work that has to happen in order to get the new equipment up and running. And then of course, the large atrium feeling area is the library. And then the glass on the lower left is the, is, it's some classrooms and it faces just the east there where the, the big green is. And then there's a photo of a finished classroom of the science room. Here's some O'Neal photos. So this is a large photo or a photo of the large space in the, in the multipurpose room, in the gym. And you can see the wood flooring going down. On Herrick, we're not yet able to put the wood flooring in, but, but at O'Neal we are. So it's exciting to see they'll be progressing on that wood floor for the next week or so. And then again, boiler picture, excited to see those behemoths get removed and demolished. Lower left, again, beautiful new restrooms, so that's exciting. And then roofing going on. Again, these are all bituminous roofs, and so they get multiple layers of, of the bit applied. In terms of overall updates, first for Herrick, so main entrance, I was getting a little eager on the schedule. So canopy is not coming down this week, don't worry. That's the, the last week of school or the end of the month. For new classrooms, again, as you saw, finishes, casework, window shades, really, really at that transition point. We'll be transitioning a punch list for those new classrooms that are just finishing up before we start the new classrooms for the summer. In the gym, we're not yet able to start the flooring, but the acoustical panel, acoustical panels are able to be started. And again, that's, that's contingent on, the flooring is contingent, contingent on getting the comm ed service. In the kitchen, equipment is to arrive this week, which is very exciting. And then on the site, if you've driven past, the ring road is getting complete. The turf started going in today, which is beautiful. It's a great week to start with the warm weather. And then Bullion Andrews team, the subcontractor team is ready to, for, for the new transformer. So they're slightly ahead of schedule thankfully. However, we are still waiting on confirmation from comm ed. And so that's one of those things again, that keeps us up at night in terms of, hey, where are we at comm ed? And so those weekly call, bi-weekly calls with them continue to hold, hold them accountable to get on our schedule. And so that we're able to get all the systems up and running and the air conditioning going.
You just clarified when Jordan was talking turf, he means natural grass.
Natural turf, yes.
Artificial turf fields.
Not plastic.
Thank you.
Yeah, you'll see the, the pad is all.
Save my emails for tomorrow.
Save you a few questions. But yeah, I mean, the, the parking lot, you know, the bus lane, all of that gravel and compacted, ready to go. So it looks really sharp. And then summer renovations, of course, is going to be hot and heavy, both on Herrick and, and O'Neal. And so getting ready for that with packing and moves, et cetera. For O'Neal then, gym and locker rooms, finishes and flooring are being installed, again, wrapping all of that up. The main entrance then, transition is coming with the steel and glass. And then the roofing to be commenced this summer. For the science addition, that casework is being installed currently. And that addition will be actually complete in July. Which will allow focus on other areas to be wrapped up early August. For the kitchen, roll up doors are going in, mechanical install, mechanical, electrical and plumbing install is underway. And so again, that's sort of in the later rough in period and it'll be wrapping up in July. And then similarly for Herrick at O'Neal, the summer renovations are going to commence very, very soon. For elementary schools, I put this on one slide because again, we're kind of in that transition phase of, all right, we're not yet to the summer. So for phase one, again, there were several lingering issues, just in terms of commissioning, warranty issues that arise during the school year as the mechanical systems are used and such. And so those items will be addressed as soon as school is out. The NICOR and comm ed rebates that we filed for have been finalized and payments are being processed and checks are being sent to the district, which is great. And then for phase two, we're about to launch into that, right? So coordination's occurred, subcontractors all teed up and ready to hit the ground running. And so staff will be ready to, to ship out, to get out of the way of the construction crews coming through. The utility rebates, pre-applications for those have, for both NICOR and comm ed have commenced and are being, will, will be processed as those projects progress. And then finally, the bi-weekly comm ed coordination meetings continue. So we're not entirely on track. We're better than we were last summer in terms of their commitments and abiding to the schedule, but we're not yet where we want to be. And so we're very much focused on making sure that they hit those critical, critical deadlines this summer, that we don't have any trouble. And then finally, for phase three, Belair, Elsierra and Pierce Down, which will be next summer, summer 2026. Design is ongoing and drawings will be released for budgeting shortly. We, we got the next set, but we'll get the budgeting from that next set here in June. And then bid documents for the long lead, this, this bid package actually got smaller. We were originally going to do a bunch of mechanical equipment and electrical. Now it's just a little bit of electrical equipment. So that bid will be on the, coming in on the 23rd here in a couple of weeks. And then the balance of that work will be slated for, to, to be bid out in September. In terms of furniture and equipment, this is on the consent agenda this evening, the focus being on the yellow column here. And so there are still several items on the O'Neal and Herrick side for the rest of the furniture there. And then the gym equipment and some appliances have also been included in the packet. And so again, the total for this evening is $246,000. And again, the projections on the FFNE scope continues to trend under budget, which is, which is a great spot to be. Overall budget snapshot, so 94% of referendum project costs are committed. Again, that's really just the phase three schools remaining. And then obviously some of the FFNE and some of the technology. 57% complete on the overall referendum work. And then the breakdown of the construction contingency is shown below in the little table. So on O'Neal, 65% complete with construction, about 45% of the construction contingency allocated. Again, this is just construction contingency, not owner contingency that we care separately. On Herrick, 62% complete with construction, 71% allocated. Between those two schools, it averages about 60, 59 or 60% when you look at just the middle schools. So even though you see a little bit of a, we're a little upside down on Herrick. Obviously, we're, we're to the black in O'Neal. Overall, we're in a good position between the two. For the elementary schools, again, haven't yet started construction for phase two. And like I said, for phase three, we're working on the SD budget. Bullion Andrews will be working on the SD budget this summer. Overall budget snapshot here, there was not really anything on this slide that I wanted to particularly focus on, unless anyone had any questions in terms of our spent to date, our committed to date.
Questions or comments?
Oh, questions now?
Just on the, just particular to this slide again, there was nothing particularly to draw. Once we do the next set of bidding, then we'll update in terms of that, the bar graph that we've showed before. Hey, here's where we're at over under. Again, the last snapshot on that was to say, look, we're, we're going to be on, we're, we're aiming for that $16 million on phase three. But we are also holding above and beyond that, a $2 million sort of set aside, depending on where we land, just to be conservative, right? But we're not saying we're aiming for 18, we're aiming for the 16, because that's the design to a number. So the 890 on owner contingency there, again, is with all of the accepted alternates to date, right? In terms of the added kitchens, the added interior doors, the added cabling.
Are we looking at taking away some of the things for phase three schools that we did for phase one and two schools?
No, we're not, we're not looking to take anything away. Right now, we're designing, designing to hit the $16 million budget. And again, we've got that little, I don't want to call it a slush fund, but we've got that built in flex to say, look, do we save that entire $2 million for bid day? Or does some of it need to be allocated, pre-allocated? Or does some of it need to be allocated, pre-allocated with the new budget from Bully and Andrews? Again, that's an ongoing conversation, our ambition and drive is to say we have to be at 16, so that at bid day we have that extra, those extra funds. But as they've been going through the design process, as we did with phase two, it's, okay, A, what are the lessons learned from previous phases? Again, a little bit different when you're dealing with the two, the two schools, Bel Air and El Ciera compared to Pierce Downers, being a different school. But how do we match what's been promised in the referendum from the very beginning, inclusive and include lessons learned so that we're not burning some of the overtime that we had to last summer in order to play catch-up on things? And where things just kind of started to go a little too far in terms of recovery.
Yeah, you've hit the two big things that kind of concern me right now, right? One, design.
Yeah.
And two, overtime.
Yep.
Right? Those two numbers, and overtime was something I started from the very beginning of our referendum discussions, is overtime kills budgets.
Absolutely.
Schools, for hospitals, for anyone doing work. So that overtime budget is really important to get commitments in the right places from those bidding. So that we have proper right numbers to go off of. This summer is going to be one of those summers where there's a lot of work going on and a lot of potential overtime. But we gave a big window of time by changing our school schedule, so I expect that all the wonderful people we have hired will be able to manage that well. I'm curious why we condensed, we had a long lead for electrical and mechanics, you said, but now it's just going to be electrical, why, why is that?
I mean, early concept was, hey, conceptually, what are the long lead time items that you want to be concerned, that you are concerned about? And with some, you know, with Herrick, with O'Neil, you've got, you know, cooling towers that you have to order well ahead of time. Whereas a lot of the things, we're not doing that for, you know, A, we've got air already. And at part of the schools that are coming out for phase three, and B, there's no cooling tower or anything like that. So it's, I don't want to say it's off the shelf, Ben can speak more to the specifics of the equipment. But again, panels are really, electrical panels are the only ones that have been of concern. We are talking
About costs. Time goes on, costs going higher.
Yeah, so
Big current climate.
With the, yeah, agreed, yeah, so with tariffs and everything, again, we're having that conversation, do we do an interim package? So if we're not bidding the rest of the, of the bid group until September, could we do an interim one in July, right? For the mechanicals, just to alleviate a little bit of pressure on the tariff side or on any concerns there. But we're not, we weren't far enough, we being white and the whole team wasn't far enough along on the design of the mechanicals to say, let's get it in this bid package. The lead time even for the electrical, Ben and I were talking earlier before this meeting. The electrical components for this summer are already sitting in warehouses here, right? So they were ordered well ahead of time from last 2024. So we're in a similar position now, right? The stuff we're ordering in the next several weeks here are going to be far, arriving far earlier than they're actually needed. And how can we set ourselves up for that on the mechanical side too? Because you'd rather pay a little bit of warehousing if you have to, than deal with schedule delays and overtime and things like that.
And cost increases.
Cost increases, right.
So I'm hoping that somebody is tracking potential impact to cost if we don't
That is absolutely an ongoing conversation, yeah. I mean, the trade partners that Bully has had at the table have been good to work with, not perfect, we've had to have plenty of hard conversations, especially Bully with them. But in terms of looking at the outset of what's the impact of ordering this now, what pricing will you hold and for how long? In order to not have to come up against the wall at the wrong time.
Yeah, and if design continues to be an issue, I'm going to continue to have issues with the, that we're paying a flat percentage rate on our design, and I'm contracts again, because I don't, I, design seems to be something that continuously falls behind schedule. And that really bothers me a lot, because it then results in increased costs.
Yep, yep.
And that's an issue for me.
I would 100% agree. Yeah, that
I don't know what White needs to do, but White needs to do something to get it, to get it under control.
Yeah, and that's, again, we have our regular meetings with them, tomorrow's a technology meeting. So Tuesday afternoons usually is the scheduled meeting to address the next iteration of design. And again, we're continuing to make sure that, hey, White, we've got us down schedule here, we can't fall behind. Make sure that you're getting out to the schools, investigating existing conditions in phase three. What else do we need to find out on the engineering side? Because that's the bulk of the costs. So I, I would agree with you, I mean
Yeah, because as the budget goes up, their percentage also goes up.
Yep.
I have a big problem with that, so.
And, and again, they've been I'll, I'll speak to both sides, right?
Sure.
Plenty of criticism go around from the whole team to say, hey, guys, how can we hold this, how can we do a better job here? And yet also, when it came back to phase two bidding, right, going awry to a degree, White came forward, right? If you recall, so again, that's the kind of team spirit, not holding to the letter of their contract, but actually flexing on their fee to the benefit of the district that we want to see. So even as much as we are like engrossed in, guys, where are we at with this next phase, the last phase, let's make it a success. We're also saying, look, we recognize where you guys have given, and we expect you to continue to.
I don't think they give enough, but that's just Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, nothing, if there's no other question in the budget summary. One last little photo snap, snapshot, just a little bit of a sequence here of the exhaust tower coming down. So kind of interesting over at Herrick. I think that was, that's the end of those slides. Any other questions on schedule, budget issues?
Questions or comments from the board?
Jordan, I just want to thank you and Bully and Andrews, especially when he said they are ready to go for phase two. I mean, everything is lined up and it will be a staff exit. The construction people will be literally walking right by him, so we have everything teed up and ready to go. It will be a longer summer, you're correct. We have some bigger schools this summer, it's going to be a frantic summer, but I know we're committed to making sure that all that stuff gets done on time, has to be done on time. And so there's just been a lot of great teamwork and a lot of great planning to make sure that we're ready to go and we don't waste any time at the start, so that we can finish by the time we need good kids back in the building and our staff.
Yeah, that's been a big focus for us is, okay, what does that August 1st to 26th, 22nd look like? Because when we see some of these early completions in July, we feel really good, right, for certain sections of the buildings. Because we just know that there's going to be plenty that are still stacked up in early August. And when you're trying to rush through punch lists, it just, again, takes a lot of time and can be a lot of headache and heartache if we don't have enough time for the movers to get things back in, for the staff to get settled, et cetera, so. Any other questions?
No, I think we're good, thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us up to reports to the board, first up is going to be the superintendent report, that's Dr. Russell.
Thank you, I know we just had three presentations, so I'll try and condense as much as I can here. First, I want to thank the Hillcrest students, staff and families that were here, great things were taking place at Hillcrest, like all of our schools. Always great to see kids at our school board meeting, and I thought they did a wonderful job. And I want to thank Principal Zupka for her update as well as her PTA. In terms of personnel, what you don't see on this May board meeting, we always will include an action item to finalize this year's school calendar. And that's because as we have traditional snow days, we have to amend the calendar, use emergency days. This year, we don't have to do that, that's why you don't see that action item this evening. We had one e-learning day in lieu of a regular attendance day that does not require a board approval to change the calendar, because we, that counts as a day of attendance. So no need to amend the calendar this year, so that's why you don't see that. I'm hoping next winter will be similar, and we don't even have to do any e-learning days. Also, this is a positive note, if you remember from last month, we had several people from the public express concern about the number of staff members that were ripped. And we said, we hope we can call back as many as possible. So later on tonight's agenda, we will be recalling 21 certified staff members. These are teachers who were part of last month's reduction in force, based on the amount of confirmed student registrations we have at this time, as well as the current staffing patterns in the district. We're excited to confirm those positions for those 21 teachers for next school year, so that's a huge step forward. Our staffing work continues as we're monitoring enrollment in some specific buildings and sections, so that we can get closer to confirming staffing positions for next school year as we're confirming the details of scheduling across the district. So lots of progress on that, I want to thank Mr. Sissel, he's had quite the busy month, driving back and forth through all of the schools. Based on the anticipated availability of positions and the specific licenses and endorsements of some of our first-year teachers. We will not be able to call all the ripped staff members back. But we do hope to recall many of those certified staff at upcoming board meetings, some more to come on that, and we'll continue to keep the board updated. Again, the biggest component of that is we're close to finalizing registration, but we're not quite there yet. And believe it or not, you know, 5% of our families registering can swing sections and things like that, that's why we always wait till June to do the staffing update. In terms of curriculum and instruction, Liz and her team are currently working through the math acceleration and gifted identification process. That's quite a robust process, and she's been spending a lot of time doing that, as well as the curriculum coordinator, so thank you for that. Technology, busy preparing for the summer months, that's always a busy time for technology. Also, those staff MacBooks that we wanted to get ahead and purchase prior to tariffs setting in, instead of purchasing those over the summer. James and his team have already deployed 68 of those, we hope to be at 90 very soon, so as soon as we get them. We are getting them in the hands of our teachers, but then also we can take their current machines, the resale value on Max is usually pretty good. And so those will be right back into the revenue stream with the old devices, so thank you for turning those around so quickly. In terms of special services, one of the things we're very excited about. Next year at Kingsley School, we will be welcoming SACID's Visually Impaired Program this fall. This program serves students who are blind or visually impaired from the 92-member school districts within the DuPage-West Cook Regional Association, which we're a part of. Ironically, I'm going to talk about that a little bit later in the SACID update. This initiative will bring two specialized classrooms to Kingsley School, providing a supportive learning environment for these students. Our school community is eager to learn more about Braille, White King Day, and how to effectively partner as a cited guide and supportive friend. We saw some of that work at Fairmount during the Distinguished Service Awards, so we're excited to team up with SACID as well. Public relation, just some really quick things, Select 58 and DSA, the Distinguished Service Awards took place over the last couple of weeks. Really wonderful events, recognizing not only our students, but also our staff, we had a record number for Distinguished Service Awards nominees this year, which was absolutely fantastic. Want to thank Member Bernard, she represented the board at the DSA, and Member Hughes got to pull double duty at Select 58, so it was nice to see him there as well. Can't believe this, but a week from this Thursday, we are already at eighth grade promotions. We keep thinking about that in 58, we're not used to getting out in May, this is definitely unique for us. So next Thursday, May 22nd, at Diamond Grove North High School, O'Neil's promotion ceremony will be at 5:00 PM, and Herrick's will be at 7:00 PM. For the board members, please RSVP with Melissa before you leave tonight. Board members are always invited to attend, we love having board members there. We need to make sure that we're accounting for enough seating on the stage, so if you could confirm with Melissa before you go tonight, that would be very helpful to our middle school teams as they plan. Last day of school is Friday, May 23rd, so we are less than two weeks away from the last day of school, it's always a sprint to the end. Want to thank our teachers, our students and our families for all the great things that take place in the school district in May. It's been a fun couple of weeks, it's been a tiring couple of weeks, but we're almost there. And especially want to thank our students for continuing to work hard right up to the end, that's always very important. That concludes my report.
Thank you, any questions or comments?
Hang in there, everybody, school's almost over.
Still weird saying May.
And, you know, another PSA, if you have not registered for next year. We cannot figure out our classes and our teaching staff and all of that.
Just to piggyback off, I do want to thank our building secretaries, we are now at the time of the year where we're not just emailing, we are calling families. It is so very important, not only for our staffing, but for sections, for all of those things, we need all that information so we can make final decisions.
Appreciate it. All right, next up is our monthly business report and our treasurer's report, Mr. Drefall.
Thank you, we have a light month, we have one item on the agenda for approval, and that is the stop-loss insurance. To remind the board, we are our own insurance firm of sorts for health and life, I'm sorry, medical, health and dental insurance. We, we contract out for different aspects, the stop-loss, which is the amount above $175,000 per person. Our medical, our PBM or pharmacy management, we bid that separate. And then our third-party administration, which is currently Aetna Insurance, we bid them as well with our consultant Assured Partners. So each year we go through a process and evaluate, a stop-loss is one of those, it's a 7-1 renewal date. And so we have good news, this is down for the second year in a row. And so our recommendation is to actually switch back to the firm we had previously. Assured Partners bids these out, we get in results, we go through and review them with them real quickly and look at what the differences are. And, and so that's what you have for this evening for action. Additionally, what was posted on Friday is amended budget, since we had issued the second bond issue for the capital work, second and final bond issue. That brings in a considerable amount of money into the, into the budget that we hadn't put in. We anticipated selling it, we just didn't know how much it was going to be and where it was going to be at when we were done. So for all those reasons, we amend the budget for the end of this year. We also make some adjustments of things that we know, revenue, whether they're up or down in some spots. Interest income is up considerably against our original budget, so we adjust those expenditures, we also evaluate and update those as much as we think those are going to end for projection, for the productions that we see, the projections that we see. So that will be on the board agenda at the June meeting for approval with a hearing. We need to have it out in 30 days, so you have that in your packet as well, and it was posted online. Other than that, a year-to-date report, this is our low cash point, we are right now at a low piece. Along with registering your student for school, I would ask and urge you to pay your tax bill early. Our first distribution, I know I, my wife laughs at me when I say that. Our first distribution that we will receive from the county is May 23rd. And so they've got those dates out posted, so that is our first piece. We do receive 50-plus percent of our, 48% of our revenue in the last 45 days of the school year, of the last day of our fiscal year. So, you know, it's kind of a wild system that we have, but that's the structure, so we're right now at our low point. And then we will have those, those funds coming in significantly amount on May 23rd, and then, you know, two more installments in June, so.
And just to underscore what Ted, this is precisely why we have to have that 35% fund balance policy. If you did not have that policy, you would not have enough in savings to get through your low cash point. And you would have to take out tax anticipation warrants, which I always equate to the equivalent of almost like a payday loan. And that is not something we ever can afford to be in this school district, sorry Ted.
Nope, that's, thank you, exactly, that's, you know, and, yeah, so we're in, in that spot, but we're in good, you know, good spot for a while now. We'll make it through, and then, you know, we'll have those funds in for the next payroll in a couple of weeks, so. Other than that, the year-to-date is going as, as we expected. All of the bills have caught up to us now with the change of address, so we're not lagging in anything. And if you think it took a couple, about several months to get sorted out from Warrenville Road to here, so. Other than that, if there are any questions.
Questions or comments from the board? Thank you Ted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have committee meetings, but not much, so Policy Committee has not met, neither has the Legislative Committee, or the Financial Advisory Committee, or the District Leadership Team, or the Health and Wellness Committee. So we're going to jump all the way up to the SACID report, that's back to you, Dr. Russell.
Yeah, for SACID report, I informed the board in an update about the difference between the DuPage-West Cook Consortium or former board and SACID. DuPage-West Cook is every person who belonged, or excuse me, every school district who belongs to SACID also belongs to the DWC as well as several other districts, almost 70 other districts. And the DWC really does a lot of work with students who need assistance with seeing or hearing. What has happened over the years is that the DWC has moved away from its board duties because SACID and LADZI, the other special education cooperative, are the two entities that handle all of those services on behalf of the DWC. And so what the DWC has been experiencing, because SACID and LADZI are doing everything, is that they don't really have a function as a board anymore because those two special education cooperatives are taking over that. So the DWC has been meeting throughout the year, and they have So the DWC has been meeting throughout the year, and they have recommended to all their member districts that they still continue to meet as an advisory board, but no longer as an official board, because the SACID board and the LADZI board take care of all of that. So at the June meeting, I will ask this board, just like all the other members are, to pass a resolution confirming that change from the DWC being a board to an advisory group, and then SACID's board and LADZI board will continue to take all of that. Nothing changes at all in terms of the services that we offer the students. It just is looking at the governing structure differently because of who is handling those services. So I believe they have met the threshold already in terms of the number of boards that would have to approve the change from the DWC serving as its own board to an advisory group. Nevertheless, we still need to pass that here, so that will be coming at the June meeting. That was in an update a couple of weeks ago, but if any board member would like that information again, please let me know, and I'd happy to answer any questions on that. The recommendation for me as superintendent is to approve that change, as is the recommendation from all the other superintendents who are part of LADZI and SACID as well.
Questions or comments? All right, we have no discussion item tonight, so that's going to move us on to public comment. This is an opportunity of members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but is not intended to be a time for members of the public to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff when appropriate. The board has a lot of 30 minutes tonight for public comment. We ask that you keep your comments to a three-minute limit to allow everyone the opportunity to speak at this time. Let's see, we got them. Right at this time, I've received three cards. Melissa Capim from Lester about budget cuts.
Thanks. I'm Melissa Capheim. I have two students at Lester Elementary. They're fifth and first grade, and they're delightful. And, you know, we really love District 58, and I love when people look at me when I speak to them. And, you know, everything's really great, and I know that we're all facing a lot of financial struggles. Like, I looked at the numbers, I looked at your budgets. The tax, the way the taxes function in this town really stink, and schools really get the short end of the stick, so I'm not sure where Downers Grove priorities lay, not where mine do. I tried to want to blame you all and make you be the bad guys. I even looked at everyone's salaries, including yours, Dr. Russell, and said, if you took a 3% pay cut, what would that do? That's just, and it does not get us enough to cover the deficit, so you don't have to take a 3% pay cut today. But I am struggling with, I took a 3% pay cut at my job for it. I am struggling, though, with the way these things are getting set out. I know that you had the Financial Special Committee in January, Megan sends out the great board previews, but there's such little communication besides that. And I, you know, what's the last time email that you read in Thorough, or the board meetings from everything, or all the stuff that we're all on? We just talked today about including stuff in the PTAs and things like that, but I think many of us feel very blindsided and uncertain as to what is going to happen in which of our classrooms. I understand now that you do not get the budgets till May and enrollments, but I would like there to be more transparency. At the end of the day, we are your boss. We pay all of your salaries. I would like you to tell us a little bit more, or ask our principals, or something so that we know what is happening with our kids, not what it's like to get a lacquer in seventh grade. How many kids are going to be in my kid's classroom? I already don't think that we have a good enough education system here. I think the gifted classrooms are falling behind. I ran a ton of numbers, I wrote an op-ed. I don't want to be the person who hates this because I love it here. But I think these budget cuts stink, and I would like more transparency in what is going on and who is using data to make the decisions. You're all about to start, you got a PhD or an ED. Like, what is the data that we are using to make these decisions? And right now, I'm not actually sure anyone can answer that. Why does kindergarten get a teacher cut but not sixth grade? What is the student ratio? What is the district deemed as the best student ratio? I can't find that, so please present that to me. Present a plan as to what we're doing. We want to call Bully out, so what are we doing and what is the data behind it? Transparency is all I'm asking for, and it can't just come from Megan and her lovely, lovely emails that I really like. You know, PTAs, work with them. So that's all I have. And again, the utmost respect. I could not be a teacher. I really appreciate it, and we do like it here, and congratulations. But I just, you know, the town went into chaos, and it stinks. And I just hope that you can have some transparency as you got your final numbers together. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Young, Lester class sizes.
I'm going to read here. Good evening. My name is Catherine Yonkey, and I have a first-grade student at Lester. First, I want to express appreciation for your difficult work in managing the district's finances during a challenging time. I recognize that the expiration of federal COVID-19 funding has placed significant pressure on the district's budget. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the impact of larger class size resulting from possible section cuts. Like many parents, my worry is simple. The quality of our children's education is directly tied to how much individual attention they receive from their teachers. With larger classrooms, teachers inevitably have less time per student, making personalized support and instruction far more difficult. My number-one priority is making sure my child is thriving in his academic career. These early years have a huge impact on his future success, both academically and beyond. Finally, when I asked my son what his worries were about having a bigger class size, because we talked about it this past weekend, for next year, he said he was worried there would be too many kids in the classroom, and they wouldn't be able to move around the class like they currently do for activities and worksheets. Please put these students and their success first as you work through these budgeting issues. Please do not move this current grade of three sections down to two very large class sizes. Thank you again for your work. I and many other parents look forward to your continued efforts in addressing this issue. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Last up, Allison Suze, Lester class size.
Good evening. My name is Allison Suze. I have a first grader at Lester, and I have an incoming kindergartner next year as well. And I wanted to come to the meeting and talk to you guys because I had sent an email last week. I wanted to be clear, the email was not just from me, it was from a majority of the families that have incoming second graders next year. And I understand the decision is not final, but I'm at the soccer games, I'm at the school drop-off, I'm on the group chats, and I can hear the panic and the concern among parents that this incoming second-grade class is going to go down to two classrooms of 27 students each, assuming no other kids join. And I know that that may not happen, but I thought it was important to clue the board and the superintendent in to the panic and the concern that the parents have. I thought, I really appreciated your response. I thought it was really professional and thorough, but we still had a couple more questions. You guys are the experts. I don't know much about education, but I just wanted to come forward and have open communication so you're aware of how concerned the parents are and the questions that we still have. So one of the things that I saw is that the goal is for 80% of K through 2 students to have 24 or less students. You can understand, and I'm sure there's other schools affected too, but I can only speak for my son's class. When we're seeing that we're not only going to fall outside of that and be in the bottom 20% of the district, but also miss that metric by quite a bit, it's hard to stomach that your kid is going to get the short end of the stick and not say anything. So I'm advocating for my child, and I'm advocating for all the other parents that are sharing the same concern. Your email mentioned that success rates can still happen even in these larger classes, and I'm assuming that the success rate is test scores. Test scores are important. But when I think about sending my kid to school, I'm thinking about the vibe in the classroom, how safe he feels, how comfortable he feels. And the last time I was volunteering in my son's classroom, I noticed as he was walking down the hallway, he was chatting with his teacher as if they were close friends. It literally felt like a family friend, how they were talking back and forth. And I just thought, I love this environment he's in every day. I love how he gets individualized teaching. He really knows his teacher. And I try not to be hyperbolic, but if you take a classroom of 18, Catherine mentioned how they move around the room, they have comfy little chairs to sit in, the teacher meets them where they're at, and you put 27 second graders who are itty-bitty and still learning how to interact, not be distracted, into a second-grade classroom, the parents are just really concerned about it. I understand that we can't fix the money right now, but I think two of the main concerns and information that the parents want are, one, if, and I know no decisions are final, but if they do reduce the class size to two for Lester, what resources can we give to these students so they don't get the short end of the stick? So if there can be a meeting, if the decision does come with the principal and the parents to understand, is there a part-time teacher? Are there aides? And then, most importantly, what are we doing so this doesn't follow them for the rest of their time at Lester? And hopefully, there can be improvements made so they're not always in this really large class size. I, you know, I hope that we're not coming off as adversarial. I think everybody here in this room has the same goal. I can see how much you guys care, and I appreciate it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That concludes the cards that I have. Is there anyone else here that would like to make a public comment? Okay, thank you, guys. That brings us up to the consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report, financial statement, consisting of the list of bills and summary, and the discipline improvement plan?
So moved. Second.
Melissa, please call roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Thomas.
Aye.
Member Bernard.
Aye.
Member Joshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. All right, we have some recommendations for action. First up is the resolution of the nomination for membership on the Downers Grove Plan Commission. We are nominating today a member Ochek, mostly because he's absent. I'm just kidding. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution of nomination for membership of the Downers Grove Plan Commission as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. For those of you who are not aware, the Plan Commission, which is part of the village, has an ex officio member from either us or from 99WeRotate. This is our year to take it. 99 cannot let their person off until we do, so I think they're going to do that at their next meeting, and that's what this is for. So he will serve with us for one year, and then it'll go back to 99. Any other questions or comments on that? All right.
This is also, I mean, Darren was joking. Steve has done this before. He has volunteered to do it again.
He has volunteered to do it again, yes. All right, all those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, the motion carried to adopt the resolution for the membership of the Downers Grove Plan Commission as presented. All right, we have stop-loss insurance. Is there a motion to accept the proposal from Boya for specific stop-loss insurance for a coverage of $1,439,073 for the plan year of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Thomas.
Aye.
Member Bernard.
Aye.
Member Joshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to adopt the resolution, I'm sorry, to accept the proposal for Boya for specific stop-loss insurance for $1,439,073 for the plan year of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. Last up is surplus equipment. It's fitness equipment, vending machine, HVAC parts, MacBook Airs, cafeterie warmer and freezer. Is there a motion to designate as surplus equipment all of that that's attached in the memo?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Melissa, please call roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Thomas.
Aye.
Member Bernard.
Aye.
Member Joshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to designate as surplus equipment the items listed in the attached memo. We have a construction consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the middle school furniture purchase for common spaces, the middle school fitness equipment purchases matrix, the middle school fitness equipment purchase from Kaiser, and the appliance purchase for fax and staff lounges?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa, please call roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Thomas.
Aye.
Member Bernard.
Aye.
Member Joshi.
Aye.[1744.98]